702, I'd like to call the planning board. Meeting of the, what's the meeting? The 19th?
Yes, the 19th.
Thank you. The 19th to order. First thing I'd like to do is introduce our new planning board member to Crowley. Jim is from just down the street on 109. I think most of you know him and remember him for his years of service with the ambulance and with the ice cream stand. He used to serve us all when Krabby Bear was out. What was your ice cream place called?
Krabby Bear.
Krabby Bear. There you go. We all, and for the extra weight we've put on since you've had it, we appreciate that as much as we sincerely appreciate you being here. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jim has been to a workshop, so this isn't absolutely brand-new to him. It's almost brand-new. So tonight you will be voting as necessary. Our one member is out with Gavin Mahoney is out, John is not feeling well. I'd like a motion to approve the minutes of our December 5th meeting.
I make a motion to approve the minutes of the December 5th meeting.
Second? Second. All in favor?
You have a question?
Yes.
Is it a two-story home or is it?
We went over that. It is a two-story home with sleeping rooms.
Under the roof.
Under the roof. So kind of like a, like a, alright, no problem. Servants' quarters were always under these.
We usually call it, it's only half-story.
Yeah, yeah. Alright, so a two-story home. So there are no corrections. So these minutes will be filed as red, so, and it is zero, five zero? What? No, no. Jim abstained, he was not here. 401. 401. Thank you. New business. William Lloyd, 35 Oriole Road, map 138 lot 019. Best practical location application to build a 14 by 24 addition onto the existing structure within the 30% expansion allowance. And that's on your agenda, which is the yellow paper that should be in your folders. The blue folder.
Yeah, the bird gives it a look.
Okay. So, she says she wants to come. You want to let us in on this? Mr. Paul?
They're proposing an addition onto the side of it. That's the area in the back of it. And once you're doing a foundation outside of the original footprint of the house, it's got a graphic picture on it.
But that's the side?
That's the side of it, yeah.
Well, outside showered there?
Didn't see that.
Or like, on that picture it shows. How far from the water?
Less than 10 feet. So this is something we've never really dealt with as a board before, that the foundation going into the side. And the state's kind of clarified it a little bit, that this does go under best practical location. You know, if the board decides that putting an addition on the side is okay, and maybe you look at it when, if they try to do a foundation under the house, we could relook at it again. Can you see where this file is? The paper version?
Oh, yeah.
There's a brand-new septic up in this area right here. So, there is some, if he was doing a foundation underneath the house, we would be relocating it.
They're like pushing it back?
Yeah, yeah, it is on some sort of sonotube-type thing underneath it. So, this is something we'll probably see more and more of, where they're just doing a foundation and not doing anything to the camp, and the board's gonna have to take a look at it. And obviously, everything, every time we do something, it's kind of a precedent-setting thing. And have a policy that, you know, if you're doing this, we're not going to be as concerned until you do this, this, and this.
What side is it on, the addition on?
14 by 24.
14 by 24.
No, what side of the house?
This side right here.
Which is the, is that the best picture of the town?
Yep.
We'll just show you. Yeah. She says, she said she wants to do it. So it's gonna extend the house out 14 inches, but it's 24 inches long.
That's right.
And it will be further back. That part's gonna be where it's 10 feet at one point, that point's gonna be 19 feet back. We'll send that on for you, I'll see if I'm reading correctly.
So are you saying that putting a foundation under the addition, but not the house?
Not underneath the house.
Is it, is, is, okay, I don't wanna see it.
Yeah, I'm not too worried about handling this. Yeah, because they can see it over there. There's no overhang on this roof, though.
Yeah.
He says it's okay. Where's the road? Here. Somewhere to get in there.
The driveway?
The road itself.
Right there's the driveway. So Oriole comes, turns this way.
Yeah.
This has a right-of-way down through these two yads here, drops down into here.
Yeah.
And here's a turnaround there.
Was that on 109? Was that from Youngford?
That's not Youngford, yeah.
Oh, when the, is, uh...
That's right, right near the, is down near where?
Just past the sources, and the guy's there.
Yeah, yeah.
Anderson's there.
Yeah.
Right there, so, just past that doesn't, that house 10 years old. Oriole comes down in. Originally, it went that way, they had moved the road a few years ago and pulled it in this way. So that driveway, I'm not sure if it goes through this yad and then that yad, or it just comes down there, because the maps can be a little vague.
So this falls within 30%?
It's a new foundation on the side of the main structure.
Oh, on the side of the main structure.
Yeah, yeah, because they'll be doing a foundation underneath the new addition, so it gives you, the board, the ability to look, to see if there's any relocation needed. And of course, they're not, they don't want to relocate. So...
Where's their septic?
Right in this area.
Backways.
Yeah.
Yeah, you have that map.
Yeah.
So there is room to move it.
There is room to remove it.
Love your role.
And that's awful close, the water.
It's awful close.
For 10 feet, yeah. That's very, very close.
This is just an opinion, based on no fact. I feel this, even though we could allow this foundation, I'm pretty confident at some point, whether it be next year, or 10 years from now, or 20 years from now, they'll move back because the pillars that are beneath the main house...
They're gonna be, they're gonna have to do something. And now they've got an addition with a foundation that they're gonna want to move because they addition.
Right, exactly.
And that's what it says, and the way it's written on the wall.
Yeah. And it says it's a bedroom and a kitchen they're putting in? I thought I, does it say bedroom and kitchen on that one, or doesn't?
No.
I thought I read it on something.
Maybe on the application.
I mean, if they put a kitchen in, it's dead. They're not gonna want to move it.
How far back, I mean, they get, the septic's quite away from it. 128 feet.
Is that this?
Yeah.
Yeah. So is that 128 feet?
Yeah, there's a tank, and there's a, which is...
Okay. Where's the well?
Hmm...
How far is it up to be through the tank?
The house, 10 feet. You could go up here.
And where's the well coming in? This way? You've got 50-foot setback from the road. Yeah, how does that work there on the setback?
Nowhere's near the road, the road's way up here, so this is odd where they don't have any road frontage.
They have no road frontage.
The driveway goes down through there.
They're, so it's just a runaway that they use?
They do down Oriole Road, then go onto their driveway.
Or you take them down to Oriole Road, go down onto the neighbors driveway, and then go into their driveway, their driveway crosses. I can't tell if it's two pieces of property to get to theirs, or maybe it's just one.
It kind of looks like... I'm interested, there's only three properties on that road.
About 60 feet to the septic. Septic's over in this area here.
Where's the tank though?
That's where I know. Tank's over in this side here.
The tank can be...
I mean, this here is misleading, yeah.
And the tank, the septic was only put in last year, so we have a five-year window that if...
Oh, I'm sorry, is that the tank? Or what is that?
Yeah, yeah, that is the tank. I thought it was over in this area here a little bit more. But, again, if the system was put in less than five years ago, then we wouldn't consider it.
We could always have a swing.
Or stop and move, or, so, I would thought, maybe the board may even want to go out and look at this.
I think we should go look at it, because, I mean...
Because we're not relocating it possibly, or going to relocate it, and it's not gonna go over good.
It's not gonna go over well, but if we relocate it, we're gonna, we're gonna get, at least, we'd probably be able to get the distance to drive it, right? Move the driveway, so, I'm just not familiar with the lake out there. It should be pretty flat.
How far back can you be reasonable to push it back?
If he was doing a foundation under the house and up the addition or anything like that, there's an easy 30 or 40 feet.
I was gonna say, I mean, if he just swung this thing, that it came back over here, 10 feet, and swung this up here, that's got to be at least close to 40 feet.
Quite often, there's at least the roof of the house, you can bring the front of the house to where the back of the house is.
Right.
To label it, I mean, easily, you've got them right there.
Yeah, and it's 30...
I can't see, we could just, if I know, maybe...
And it's 30, the house itself is 36 feet wide, so you're gonna take it back to 46 feet potentially, rather than the 10 feet that it is now. It wasn't that, it wasn't that.
You put the addition on with a full foundation, lockin' a house to be in there for the duration, you can't move it then.
Yeah.
You know, now is the time to move it back at the least expense possible to do so.
Yeah, and it's up to the applicant, which project he's doing, but in reality, it should be the foundation under the camp first, but they don't want a foundation under the camp. And of course, nobody wants to move further away from the lake, but...
This is so close.
I mean, this is a good reason not to.
How old is it?
I wanted to say, like Gavin has said, you know, we traditionally have moved things back as far as we could, and...
And again, you'd look at something different that's eight feet versus something that's 75 feet.
Right.
And...
If he was putting that addition on sonotubes, to me, that would be a totally different, that would not be a permanent fix.
If the addition went on sonotubes?
That would not be a permanent fix.
It would be a different story, but it looks like he has, not that we're making him happy, but it looks like he has the room for it. It looks like the septic's not in the way. I think due diligence as we do a sidewalk.
And when the driveway comes in, in a sense, is really irrelevant.
It is, because...
Because that has nothing to do with...
No, and that...
And the septic's similar to the house.
Sorry, no, just, I only mentioned that because of the setback from the road.
Right.
Right, right.
I mean, in this case, the septic doesn't seem to, seems to be irrelevant.
And where did we say the well was? The well?
We did.
We did, yeah.
It made me drink in front of the lake.
Oh, then that's not an issue either.
No.
It was, it was quite a few years I talked to him on the original project, and Brenda's been working with him a little bit here, too.
Oh, does the property, Brenda? Any idea?
It's, it's an older camp.
I want to be careful with that, though, what are we calling older?
All of that? All of that?
Are we talking, are we talking 120 years, or are we talking...
I'd say it was done in the 50s, 60s.
50s, 60s, so maybe we're talking 50 to 70 years, or 80, 80 years, 70 years, but, I mean...
Is that information on the assessors page?
The year it was built?
Yeah, I can find it.
Some of it's...
Can we, can we go to that little... They only, they only have one assessor's report, and it was like 2010, and I had to go get that.
But if it says 2010?
No, I mean, that's the year, they actually put that, and they've never put it on the assess.
Because it wasn't the, the assessor would just look at it and guess, kind of, because you can guess within 10 or 20 years. Yeah, originally, he was doing a frost wall-type situation, but on these, they're, it's not sonotubes, but they're big, huge...
It's like pylons.
Pylons of some kind, yeah.
Wood cast.
Pre-cast?
They're pretty big, I would say they were house piers and footings is what he's calling it.
House piers and footings.
It's all in one. Like a wood cast sonotube, all in one.
Yeah, I think he's gonna pour them in place where the footings got heat, but, they said, my other concern was, you know, it's so close to the lake, and...
I agree with Ken and Joyce, we will have to look at it, this one here.
And then the applicant can...
Yeah, he would...
I mean, he may, if the board says, if you're just doing sonotubes, he may be willing to go that route, or the pylons, it looks like the updated plan, too. Yeah, he's showing the...
I mean, is that like post-and-beam foundation?
Yeah.
Okay, was that that's?
Shows the closest spot of the camp on that side is 14 feet, where he stands the addition, and as it goes this way, it'd be 19 feet from there, it's his measurements.
We have to see it, because I think we have to move it.
I see how far.
We have to see what it is, I think.
I mean, normally, the board has made them move things back as far as it possibly could, and normally, what restrictions are, is either the septic system's in the way, and they don't have room, or there's a big hill in the way, and that's as far back as they can go, but it's relatively...
I remember one time, there was environmental issues, we'd done down Lower Mouton, there would have been more, you know, like this, boom, and...
Right, that's what I mean by restrictions like that.
There were, there were some, could they have moved it back? If they turned it this way, we'd get three more inches if they, I mean, it just...
As if it was still on the, they have the property line.
And it was still on the property line, and the trucks going down and back, I mean, there are lots of reasons that we can let them stay, but I think we need to really take a good look at this one. I agree with that. Looking at, looking at things, and stuff like that even makes me wonder more. If they're calling that a foundation, if it's a full, if it's a full foundation, it's a...
It's a basement they're putting in?
No, I think it's gonna be piers, similar to sonotubes and building up, it's...
Would they consider a foundation?
Which we consider a foundation.
But it's not, when I think of a foundation, I think of...
A foundation.
Fricking mortar, or stone, or whatever.
Cinder blocks.
Cinder block, whatever it is.
Crow's face.
Yeah.
Basement, any of that stuff.
Any of, any of those things, no, my God.
But anything that's old enough, the structure, now is considered a foundation?
A foundation, right, right.
Probably not, yeah.
Yeah, okay, so...
Well, if he was doing just sonotubes on this addition, would you be okay with it there?
It would depend, yes.
You want to look at it anyway?
I want to look at it anyway. I think we'd all feel better looking at it.
Yeah.
Okay, his truck will use it.
So we'll let him know, we'll set a sidewalk kind of date, and tell him when we need access. If he can't get it, then we'll just, we'll look at it...
We'll see it in the spring.
We'll see it in the spring.
Everybody has their calendars handy?
Yeah.
And we talked to him, and, well, it's good to say that the days are getting shorter again, thank you, but that doesn't mean, you know...
We don't have time for sharing, too, but we just do it on a Saturday when Ken works or something.
That's a Saturday.
Does this, it is?
No, it's my Saturday to work, so that's not enough time to do a...
No, 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 because there's...
Yeah, a meeting.
No, but I, realistically, I think we're looking at January.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, so...
And what do you work, the second, third Saturdays, Ken?
Yeah, depending on the week, I'll switch off between the two. January, I'm at that, I can do the second Saturday in January, the 11th.
The 11th? I will be in a VOGA.
I'm sorry.
Does anybody have a little...
Tissues?
Tissues, or a little cheese to go with the wine over here, you know?
We're face-down, yeah.
Yeah.
Nothing I'd have to, Android.
I do my accent, boy.
Yeah. Does the 11th work?
Does the 11th work? 11th work for you?
11 and 11?
11 works for me. And I can probably, nothing, but I finally got a pair of boots, so I can try them.
Like you're saying, can you get a hold of them? If it doesn't work for him, we'll look in spring, whatever he wants.
Yeah, I mean, that's, what do we have here? So that means we meet here at 10:45?
Yeah. And we stay here till it's 32 degrees?
Until we stay here till it's 32 degrees.
11 on, the 11th and 11?
The 11th and 11. Everybody's okay with that? We'll send you pictures.
Let me have yours, yeah.
We'll send you pictures. I'll be sure to check my Q and A for that. And can you let him know that, that we want to do this, and we're just crossing our Ps and dotting our R's?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. Onto old business. We have the director planning, we want to discuss proposals, zoning coordinators regarding docks and other shoreline construction, and vacation rentals. Get things rolling.
So docks, we've had the conversations for 15, 20 years, as far as enforcement, the ordinance we have, either needs to be majorly overhauled, or what a lot of towns have done sharply, I think just did it two years ago, governed a temporary docks out of their ordinance altogether. I double-checked with the DEP to make sure that it's still something viable. They used to recommend it, the prior shoreline zoning coordinator was recommending getting temporary docks out of the ordinance altogether, because it's enforceable, basically, unless you're hiring more staff and constantly chasing, or, like I said, so, workshop, we had a light discussion about that, so, on the green piece of paper, what we would do to our ordinance is under the docks area, temporary would be a permitted use, because now it's under review, under AR, which says maybe a permit's required, so we really don't have a permitting mechanism for it. It's always been kind of a voluntary-type thing. If we were to make it permanent, usually it's a dock per 250 feet of frontage is fairly common, and then there would be a setback, how far it is, and everybody's got more than one dock, so, and that would, again, that would be hard to enforce. Going down through the ordinance, what we discussed was adding the word permanent in there, so the ordinance would really be talking only about permanent docks. Temporary would just be a permitted use, no permits or anything, you'd just be able to do your temporary docks. Temporary, basically...
Yeah, as we change, huh? Basically, put it in and take it out?
I think the definition is...
I think the definition's...
Yeah, yeah.
What is the, what's the board's feeling on the, in reference to a temporary dock? Does it start on the shore, out in the water, or does it continue back up onto the land? When I was installing docks, I had a lot of customers that, to get by the building codes, they pitched on their dock, and then they put a 24-by-whatever dock system, removable dock. Is that still, is that...
I'm not quite sure, I understand what you're saying.
I think, normally, when you think dock, you're thinking four, six feet wide, runs perpendicular to the shoreline, goes out 20, 30, 40 feet.
In the water.
In the water. So what we're seeing quite a bit now is, when you're in the water, at the end of it is a 16 by 16 area, it was built in chairs, that's not a dock. We'll see them run parallel with the shoreline, and we've seen several that, it's an aluminum dock, but it's bolted to the house, and it's eight by, do you remember the last one you had? The dock that was attached to the house? Eight by 20, or whatever the sections come, kind of, that's a deck. If it's on the... If it's on the land, it's a deck.
If it's on the house, definitely it's a deck.
Odd because we'll say, hey, that's a deck, that's a violation, they'll throw it in the water and now it's kind of a jurisdiction, it's kind of always treated that. Now, if it's bolted to the shoreline, that's, we consider that a temporary structure, a permanent structure.
Even if you just are able to winch it out for the winter?
You're not removing it, it's, once you've bolted to the shoreline. And the two issues the state has had with that is usually you have to pour a chunk of concrete on the shoreline. If you've got something existing to bolt it to, we've been okay with that.
So I could do that at mine because I do have that cement pad.
You've got an existing thing. The other thing is usually there's this winch type thing, you've got a mount on the shoreline that's got to be a hundred feet back and the geometry doesn't work with that. Or if you had a tree, it's those permanent big aluminum ones that.
What if you hook the trees in?
Yeah, yeah, to trees, we don't care.
Because that's what Bob wanted to do.
Yeah, yeah. The big thing, and we've seen snowmobiles hit them in the winter. If you don't get that up high enough, somebody's going to hit that thing and that's the cap on his liability at that point. So temporary is eight months of the year, it's in the water eight months, I think is how our definitions work.
Two by seven.
I was trying to get the state to use the word removed during the non-outing season. Structure which remains in or.
Page please.
Oh, twenty-nine. Seven months.
Seven months.
Yeah.
That's not here. Bottom of the page.
In or.
You're in the red.
You gotta stop using that book. Come January first, I'm going to ask everybody to turn those books in.
It has all my notes.
I don't care, your notes are no good either. If there have been changes made and you didn't white out or cross out your notes, we all have to be on the same page or it is blatantly unfair. So come January, if you're working on a red book.
Because you have detention.
No, I'm going to send you to the office to talk to the principal. It's going to get confiscated. And Brenda will do it. Merry Christmas.
Not the bad car.
Merry Christmas. Because I don't want to be able, it's very simple. Somebody can be saying, well, how do we know they know what they're talking about? Somebody was looking at a gray book and someone was looking at a blue book or that. So I will get you.
Okay, thank you.
I know she has one.
We have some extras on here. If you do find it this way, let me know though.
We should be quite in print anyways.
I mean, we really truly need to be on the same.
I don't want to make them too much, I can change them every year.
My thing, the only thing with the whole thing was what we have in our board, in reality, the way we do business in this town, it is unenforceable. You know what I mean, it just doesn't even make sense. And if we can simplify this and be able to monitor. Exactly what we have to do, we can do that. But if you look, and I'm just pulling this number out of a hat, where if you look at all the lakes in this town and how many docks are out, I wouldn't be surprised if it's five thousand or that, or ten, I got no idea. And they're all out there and we got this ordinance that says you have to do this, this and this to have the dock. And it's literally impossible for law enforcement to.
I mean, we need to hire extra people, we stopped doing everything else.
But I also remembering back to some of those pictures that Ken showed us where you have like, you know, one property with five docks lined up, boom, boom.
Well, I mean, some of the pictures they showed was docks for three properties too, that were already there because of the twenty-five foot radius.
But there were some that.
Were the decks and the.
Yeah.
The grill and.
And the swans. And the swans and the peacocks.
Again, I can venture on the topic of being a fisher, it's really not. The town has no authority on the water.
No, but seriously too, the swans, the peacocks, all of those things, they're temporary. I don't care where they are, they're temporary.
And the town doesn't have any authority.
And we have no authority anyway, but you know.
We went through this up on Wilson.
They are temporary, so.
When I was installing docks and legal problems, I had to go through the game lords.
Right.
And deal with them and they were the final authority on what you could do and what you couldn't do.
Yeah.
So that's why myself personally, I think we ought to cut this down and limit it to what we can exactly enforce. That's my opinion.
So moving forward, since we're just one member short, so we can get this thing moved forward. Excuse me, I just want to make sure the volume's off on this. Catch, awesome. I would like to propose, I'd like to entertain a motion proposing changing the amendments to change, proposed amendments to the zoning ordinance relative to section two point seven point five, other uses and five point one six docks and shoreline construction.
So what happened, consists was in the latest change in the RSTPs.
Right.
And the ordinance adding the word permanent, get rid of the word war, throw in permanent there as well and the word any.
And the word any.
Striking out B, C, D, E, F, G, H. Keeping the old I, that would be the new B.
B, striking J.
Striking J.
And the old K becomes the new C.
Oh, this one here?
What was that, the neighbor?
No, she just.
Okay.
Strike J, it's going to be strike, strike.
I will make the motion to move forward the list of.
Changes.
Kenny.
No, we can't do that.
Why? I can read everything you just said.
No, but you can move.
As proposed?
As proposed.
As proposed.
What you do is you submit it to the select who will.
That's what we submit to the script. Okay, but we can't, we can't do what Kenny says, that's not.
We will do what's proposed.
We will do it as proposed.
Or if you get new, written on top.
Right, as proposed.
The big letters.
Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Thank you. We have. Very good. We have now, and where are we?
Oh, so we were talking lightly short-term rentals, if we wanted to address or continue ignoring. And there's a lot of benefits for the short-term rental, so prohibiting it probably is not obviously effective by any means. Especially there is no hotels, motels, anything like that around here, so that and the use of the properties is a great economic benefit to the owners especially. But then you have the abutters. And it seems like the shorter the rental, the bigger issues that we'll have as far as complaints. Trucking, coming and going, whatever times or anything like that. People that usually rent out for a month aren't as disruptive as somebody for the weekend or so.
And short-term rentals would be less than thirty days.
Thirty days, yeah, yeah.
No, less than thirty days. And we're talking mostly, not mostly, but some, I think we discussed safety issues. You know, fire. You know.
Having inspections by the fire.
Having inspections by the fire. Yes, egress, smoke detectors in the buildings. I don't think we're ready to ask anybody to reform necessarily for sprinkler systems. Some places it wouldn't work anyway, like even responsibility for things like.
From the workshop that we had in my first.
Yeah.
To the safety issues, you're basically, this is a business proposition between the landlord and people. It would be just like a motel unit, you would have to authorize it to be, you know.
Well, you are doing business.
Yeah, you go through it, you check for, you check for fire hazards, you check for smoke detectors, you check for fire extinguishers, you check for safety codes that could cause issues. When you do that, you give the person a little bit more clout that their building is basically up to code at the date of the inspection.
I think and once, once anybody, not everybody's going to raise their hand and come in and say, okay, I'd like to sign up as a, you know.
I can't be.
B and B or a rental person, that will take some time. But after, say the fire department goes through and does an inspection, it becomes a month a year or, you know, maybe even once every two year issue you go.
I mean, I have some misgivings about all of this, I mean, I certainly agree with the safety concerns. However, I see a lot of homeowners doing, you know, renting their place out for a couple of weeks to pay their taxes. What do you do about enforcement if people choose to not come in and have the inspection done? Who's gonna, you know, send in with the docks? Who's gonna go out there and enforce it? I mean, because, you know, you look at some of these camp roads and seventy-five percent are rented at some point throughout the year. Some of them even for only a couple of weeks, who's going to do the enforcement?
And I think if they're renting to, the Jones and my friends, I rented out two weeks a year, they're not putting on Craigslist, they're not putting on L and E or B and B, Virgo, they're not post. I think as soon as, and that puts really changes dramatically over the past five, eight years, the internet. They're really pushing it, and once you've got it on the internet, that really steps it up to a business.
It's purely a business, I mean, that's the way I look at it.
But that doesn't answer the question, the question is who's going to enforce that?
That you're running a business without a permit?
Yeah, without.
Do you have a job to do that?
Well, it's a, it's a legal issue, yeah. If something should happen, the first person they're going to sue is the homeowner that rented it. And of course, they're going to go from everybody they can and they're not going to stop until they go through the town as well.
And that's what I was going to say, it's a liability.
It's a liability issue.
You could.
And if, if you have this in place and they didn't apply for it or had it checked, it relieves us of the liability if something happened.
And the thing is, this office gets phone calls all the time about noise complaints.
The only one we really addressed, most of it we didn't address, we told them, you know, basically we're not again, but was a illegal two-family, somebody split the unit. So they're living upstairs and they're renting out the downstairs, that was the one we addressed because they created an apartment and built it without any permits. But, and I think obviously it's not going to meet today's standards by any means, but if it just meant bare minimum standards, egress on each floor, some sort of a window that you could get out of on each floor so you're not stuffing people up in the attic. And they were designed where the people are sleeping, fire extinguishers on each floor, posting the street address. The septic would tell us how many bedrooms and we're going to have to come up with a number, how many people per bedroom, four, five, six, four-bedroom septic, that would be how many people or is it two or three? One of the things I liked was the towns were requiring an insurance showing that, an insurance policy that was showing that short-term rentals was on their policy, that they're insured for it. So once they're insured for it, then that takes a lot of liability off and probably that would weed out. I think when I looked the other day, there were twenty-four, twenty-five on Airbnb enacted. So either they're on all the time or I don't know if you take them down or is there a fee for that? I think Airbnb charges a fee when you go.
Airbnb charges a fee, but go to Craigslist and see what.
And you also have, you also have Key Real Estate that has hundreds of.
Oh, Key has hundreds.
You know, as well, Shapley.
Yeah, was there a room and meals tax and does the town get room and meals tax out of that? If rooms are rented, see, we don't have any house, but it doesn't have.
If it is, it would go to the state.
Yeah, so we get back, it goes to the state and the state. Well, the same with the restaurants, so the meals tax, I don't know how that works with the restaurants we have.
I'm not sure.
If the town gets any of that.
No.
Nothing?
I've never seen any.
Yeah, not all the time. One of the other things I like that the towns had is, you know, when you're posting that permit, it's giving the address of the place too, because a lot of times when something happens, they don't even know the address where they are.
Okay, so the next step is you're taking into consideration all the fire codes that have to be followed.
I would think reasonable ones, because there's no way this is going to make a meet today's standards.
No, no, I appreciate that. But that being said, the biggest deterrent for not doing this is somebody who owns a place on the water would be the cost of the permit.
Yeah.
If the cost of the permit is, right, but if it's kind of at the cost of the permit with the transfer station when you're getting rid of the birdie. If, I would think it would, people would be more likely to come in.
But it is amazing, and not to interrupt you.
No, go ahead.
But, thank you, but I'm interrupting you because. Well, I personally, one of my kids got married up here and I needed to find a place for thirty-eight people. And I rented places all around Square Pond. And I paid everywhere for a place that had two loft-style bedrooms, that had three bunk beds and, not bunk beds, twin beds on each, in each loft. That was twelve hundred and fifty dollars for a week. I rented a house for a week that was four thousand dollars on Square Pond. I did do it happily because she decided to get married on the lake at them, without, that was a cheap wedding. But don't think people aren't making money.
No, no, I appreciate that, really.
But I do agree with you that it has to be kept reasonable. But if it's, if a place is being rented, let's just say it's on Great East, which is a pretty big lake, and there's someone's getting fifteen hundred dollars a week. And, okay, so what's the permit going to be for someone like that? Are we going to say a permit's a hundred bucks a year?
You know what I think the deterrent is going to be? The insurance bond.
The insurance.
I don't think they're going to want to tell their insurance companies because I don't know what, I could call mine to see what they say. Maybe it's nothing or maybe it's going to be.
It's, um.
Cost prohibitive for the insurance company.
Costs us seven bucks to put on, you know, two million dollars extra. Cost us seven bucks to put on, you know, $2 million extra because.
For the weekend.
For the weekend.
Yeah.
And there was alcohol at my daughter's wedding. Yeah, you know.
Permit fees wise, probably to cost that, cover our cars.
Right, I don't think it does.
$150 bucks plus the mine, 100 to 250. But fee wise, I could go either way, that it's zero for public safety and the whole community benefits for it, or it's a user fee, it's 200 bucks because they're taking the time and other taxpayers on favor. It's like if your kid plays Little League or something, maybe a fee.
Or I'd even say if it's 25 bucks, first time you sign up, thank you, goodwill, you sign up.
Maybe the first year is more than the sixth year's half price.
This program, this program could be run through the fire department. The funds that you raise now that we have a full-time fire department, they can make their own.
Determinations?
You know, determinations, when they go out and when they do this. It's good for the, it's good for the firemen to find out where these places are. I mean, now that we have a lot of people from out of town working in our department that really doesn't know, you get them out, get them so that they know where they are. The funding of this could be put towards a good use. Buying smoke detectors and let the fire department start up a smoke detector program for every house in the town of Acton, going around and installing them, deutilizing the funds to protect the rest of the townspeople.
Right.
You know.
And just so everyone knows, and even people watching this on TV, this is going on all over the state, okay?
All over the country.
All over the country, really, but I mean, the one that gets me is Conway, New Hampshire. Now, Conway, New Hampshire obviously offers more things for people to do on a weekend getaway or we, than we do, for sure. I mean, we don't have ski slopes and all that business. Rockland is looking at, it's everywhere. It's absolutely everywhere people are looking at. You know, I just don't want people to think we're just pulling ideas, you know, out of the blue as a way to, to raise money or, you know, to somehow encumber people.
You have to look at our purposes for doing it, where we can't compare ourselves to places like Boston who's doing it because of lack of affordable housing for people.
No, and we would compare.
I mean, it's, you know, you've got to be clear, no, but you've got to be clear as to why we're doing this.
But would short-term rental help affordable housing?
Yeah, because it's taken that inventory out of the market.
That's what Portland finds.
Because I can rent this out for a big time, 52 times.
And make more money than renting it to somebody.
Right, that's Portland's issue. You know, you don't even have to go to Boston, go to Portland, and that's exactly their issue.
It's not why we would be doing it and we need to make clear as to what our whole purpose is behind it.
Safety.
Safety, everyone's safety.
If you were to have a motel on the town of Acton, it would have to be inspected.
I assume the one in Shapley does. I assume the one in Shapley.
IPMP for Shapley.
Do you know anything about that, Ken?
Motel?
The rooms they ran out down there.
Oh, is that in? Shapley?
Yeah. Fonsby, Bill, what's his name, you still know?
By the escrows?
Oh.
Yeah.
They.
The problem I see with most of the motels that weren't surviving have become apartments. And they weren't, they were made for transient, and now you've got school buses stopping in front of them.
Right.
You know, I've seen that with a lot of motels and.
Yeah.
Because they just wanna make it.
But maybe Shapley doesn't address that. It's been there forever.
Oh, yeah, yeah. If you've got something there forever, then it's under the wire type thing, so.
I think presently it'd be a good idea if we got something out there.
And it would be a learning curve, first year, people who have to take notifications and.
And I agree, you know, what Jim's saying, and how you get there, I don't know. It's just like, tell the fire department, this is their new job. I don't know how that works either.
We, usually we like to keep the fire department out of enforcement, proprietary chiefs, I mean, it's, you always want, if somebody needs an ambulance, you don't wanna say, just call, because we don't have permits. We want them here to see this, so most times we'll take the lead, and I'll talk with the chief on that too as well. We'll take the lead on the enforcement and stuff like that and.
Well, I think it's kind of the thing, Ken, maybe we form a subcommittee and invite somebody like Ricky.
Because it's a great PR for the plan.
Right, and, you know, we have our liaison, Kim, and we formulate, and like finding some facts, as you said, Leslie. Why is this important enough for us to be doing it? Why? And I think, you know, it gives us time to, Key Realty, how many, you know, what's the personal rentals and what's the breakdown? And they know, because, I mean, I'm sure that, you know, Mr. and Mrs. Jones from East Olgershu go to the same camp every year for a month, or maybe two.
It's changing now, it's.
We must get the right of what's the cost benefit? What's the cost benefit to the town?
Right, and what is the cost benefit to the town? And it is changing because, first of all, we're very close to Massachusetts, or, you know, people wanna get away, they want a quiet place. Well, you know, there's outlets up in Conway too, and we're in that nice area where people can go hiking if they wanna around, or get away and go apple picking, whatever, you know, so what are the benefits gonna be? I think if we could work out a, not huge, small subcommittee.
And something you obviously wouldn't have changed for this next specific year.
No, no, that's, it's too much to be.
Too much to be stretched.
Yeah, too much. But short-term rentals, where do you put your boats and where do you put your cars?
We thought about boats and things like that. So this was Rockland, and they did just what you had said, is it happening, or how? So we were looking, you know, if the board's interested, we'll try to find the time to put some sort of quick thing together of why, work with the subcommittee on that and kind of get a basis of, so that was Rockland, why are they always coming and it's events? Where are they going? Where are they staying?
Day trip to Miami.
Yeah, yeah.
You've got some wedding venues coming.
Oh, and wow, that's the other thing. We have three, two wedding venues.
Three.
Three. Wedding venues.
Three legal ones.
Three.
Two or three, no.
But.
So they're saying the same thing, who's the internet?
Joyce, do you need a motion on forming a subcommittee?
No, no. I, we don't need a motion for that. But I would ask Ken to start conversations with.
Fire department.
Fire department, please. And, you know, I'll approach Kim as our liaison. And, you know, we're not gonna be every week, we're gonna just start collecting information.
One of the things Rockland did, I think they broke it into three different groups for the short-term rentals, rooms, you're renting out rooms in your house, which I haven't seen much of that, apartments that, put in the apartment that they're renting out. Again, if you're renting out more than a month, we don't care.
Right.
And the whole house, so it's three levels. Rooms, apartment, breaking the house into apartments, the whole house, I believe is how they ended up doing it.
So we can put something together and write something up for the next meeting and then take the next step and the next step.
And when they find that this is too big of an issue and it's a 2021 then.
Yeah.
By the time we.
By the time, right. But, you know, and I think one of the very good points that Jim made on the safety is it only takes one fire, the loss of one life, one person drowning in the lake because of whatever reason, and the lawsuits are gonna fly. And, you know, nobody wants that.
Anybody who lives on the lake, anybody should be prepared for that.
They should be prepared for that.
Whether they rent or not.
Exactly, absolutely.
Usually if it's your house, your familiar, 13 steps down, take a right, 12 steps, here's my door, but if you just rented the place first time there.
Ken, even at my house, I mean, I always worry when we have guests.
Yeah.
I mean, we carry an umbrella policy specifically because I wanna be covered in the, in a burden.
Yep.
That anything should happen that.
And it happens.
I don't even rent.
Yeah, that's just company.
That's just company.
That's just family.
Yes.
And it happens.
And it happens, happens all the time.
Because the thought of someone, you know, some child visiting my home and drowning in the lake scares the Jesus out of me.
I mean, most of this information in this book, in reality, it is to protect life.
It is.
You know, it's not, I mean, that's the whole purpose, right, the fire codes and building codes and.
And my assumption would be this would be permitting through our office, it wouldn't be plain and simple, you, no conditional use, it'd just be, you meet this criteria, here's your permit. Good for so many people and parking's a big thing, well, that's one of the bigger issues we hear neighbors complaining about, parking, noise, trash.
And the one, that's, that's my favorite, are putting the boats in and out of the water, driving down your lawn to do. Yeah, never mind if it's a public rail, you know, and all that, but.
Yeah, I think we're up in board.
Okay, and we'll do some work and in January we'll talk about it and put, take the work together, as, putting us in a direction, have a subcommittee.
Set out a plan.
Set out a plan, yeah, have a project.
We usually call it stakeholders, people that have investment in it or something like that. Of course, most of them are gonna be non-residents, but.
But it probably wouldn't.
Jim, Key Realtor, he's a, he's a great.
Is that, I was just gonna, I was just gonna say. And a Realtor in here.
We also have to, have to be cognizant too of the lion's share of our tax base is non-residents who are most likely the ones that are renting.
Well, that's what I say.
You know, they, they need to have a voice in it.
That's why I say, like, you know, Key Realtor, they do a lot of renting and they could be, no, I mean, and there are other things, like, if, if something happens next door to you and it's a bunch of renters, who are you gonna call?
You're gonna go next door and say, hey, cut it out.
Uh huh, and, and, yeah, and.
And then I'm gonna call my neighbor who owns the property and say.
But your neighbor lives in Connecticut.
I'm still gonna call him.
And what's gonna happen? Nothing.
I think Portland had it, that the owner had to be living in town and available or property maintenance company.
Or property maintenance first.
Available.
Yeah, I mean, you know, lots of things, but I think set on plan, and this is how we're gonna go on that.
That's all stuff to talk about.
Yeah, all stuff we can talk about.
Rented a camp on, in Shapley, on Nelson Lake, for a week through Tom Thomas. There is a article that his rental agreement that any problems or any issues that come up will be dealt through Tom Thomas.
Yeah, yeah, something like that. Okay, and I think.
Which that's just another level of, if something happens, they're going to be suing that rental company too as well, so you would think that they would like the idea that, you know, it's been dealt check for safety and here's my permit and. We thought we were.
Right, perfect. Anything I'm not sure, like construction or whatever?
No, that was it.
Okay, and the claim where you say is director planning, capital letters on this. This is Ben Smith, and he's director planning. And Ken has spoken to him, I've met him, done a lot of looking up and research on him. He is reasonable. He has assistants who are very reasonable, and Ken has been working on a contract with him. We have the money, and when we have big issues, shall we call them?
Lot of work.
Yeah, he would come in and help us out. It kind of, we would not have to wait six or eight weeks for feedback from, you know, this place or that place or something like that. And it is, if we had a planner, if something went to Southern Maine, it probably would never have to go to Southern Maine in the first place, you know, that's, that's a whole thing. But Ken has spoken to him 20 times more than I have, so Ken, would you have?
So we were looking at being able to basically subcontract out a lot of the planning. I know coming up, we've got the subdivisions coming back, who knows what form that'll take when it comes back. We've got the animal rescue facility coming in, we've got a, I think it's 4.8 megawatt solar farm. So all those projects, we would require escrows from the developers. Give us an escrow and then we could pay the planner out of that escrow for that. So that's gonna alleviate us from, from doing that and having a professional planner review that as well, going through the process. Most of it, we could just shift the documents up to them, they could review it, send it back as needed, similar to what we were doing with Southern Maine Regional. The individual we'd be working with, two or three towns, they were, the senior planner has multiple towns, but the assistant, kind of similar to a retainer, we could do as we move on, if it seems to be working out that something I propose to put into my budget and give them our ordinance and say, what do you think we need to work on? Because we all know, just the good neighbor policy needs work. Never mind, it would be great to take conditional use and site plan out and good neighbor and have that a standalone document, because we can't deviate as we were using good neighbor, and that's why we're really starting to use it, is to see how much of it, we need changes in that. But if we've got some issues with the good neighbor, it's in the zoning ordinance, we can't, we can't bury it from it, we have to send it to the board for variances. I'm getting nervous, everybody's coughing.
You know, right?
It's, it's coughing.
Who else is coughing? Who else is coughing? I'm thinking about it.
So the plan is gonna be great on two levels, is, and the original one, just as far as subbing the stuff out, we've always done it with Southern Maine. Whoever we've got has a project, we take their escrow and, that's it, outside. And that works good. I think that second level of addressing the ordinances and working through that, or comprehensive plan, give them a comp plan and have them kick it back and show us what needs to be updated at the state level. Probably solar would be a good thing to add into the comp plan that's not in there. By chance, we updated our ordinance a couple of years ago, because we saw some solar things that the board didn't like in other communities, and we wanted to make sure it came through our board as a conditional use at least. And those were those standalone trackers, the big ones that follow the sun, and, you know, they're down by the lake and they're in front of other people's houses, and, you know, you just cut out the, the view of the lake for other people, and we noticed that we didn't really have any regulations for it, so we threw that in there too. And we noticed that we didn't really have any regulations for it, so we threw that in there too. So I think we'd like to maybe have them come down on a workshop day and get the board to meet with them and see if there's a comfort level with it. And bring them along and be able to utilize it. Also, you know, if we need to send it to Southern Maine or whatever, we can still, they'll always be there for us, but these guys would answer to us more as a client versus a town that calls us once every couple of years or something.
Um, myself personally, I think it's a good idea. I think having a person to deal with is a lot easier than...
Having a professional agency, an agency.
It'd be similar to comparing it to, we sent our documents up to MMA or we sent our documents to the town attorney.
Exactly.
You know, he knows us, they know our ordinance, and they know we've gotta change this. This doesn't meet state law. State law changed a few years ago. And the state's really good at changing things and not telling us.
See, there's a difference between MMA and the town attorney because...
What does it judge?
Not even that.
Yeah.
MMA deals with municipalities and the, our town attorney is what, a pretty much a general practitioner?
Well, the one we use is land use. He loves.
Well, then, he, all he does is land use, but not the other one.
They've got two, exactly. They've got two different attorneys.
So you have a level of expertise that may not be there at the town attorney.
But...
And MMA would have, right.
Depends who you get on the phone with MMA too. I know when I'm calling some of the companies that generate the codes, I can call, get an answer to my question. I can hang up, get another person, ask the same question and get a different answer. And of course, when you're asking a question, you're leading the question to get your answer.
But MMA, a lot of times, will give you case law.
Exactly.
Our town attorney does not give us case law. He gives us an opinion.
Yeah.
And an opinion doesn't necessarily mean that's the correct answer.
Right.
Well, everybody has, you know, an opinion is the lowest form of knowledge.
Exactly.
Very good. I was gonna say too, it seemed to be with Southern Maine that we used to have more of a direct, I believe, policy. And we knew our ordinances and we could fire up questions.
And they were in Springfield.
Yeah.
That was the big thing. I think once they moved to Saco.
I think they go too much too.
Yeah.
I mean, you never know.
And I'm sure that just like everybody else, they'd love to hire a few more people and they just can't find anyone.
Well, that's one of the things with MMA. Too, they're very good and they'll give you case law. We went to Southern Maine, you were working and four of us went. And all we got handed was case law. So...
At the last Southern Maine?
At the last Southern Maine.
All we got handed was a thumb drive.
A thumb drive.
A pink one, a thumb drive.
I chose red, but we were handed a thumb drive. I took it home. And after looking at it on my desk for a week and it didn't speak to me, I decided to download it. And it handed me case law. I can honestly tell you, I would watch those, you know, not watch, but read it. But then I'd have to go find the, I'd have to look it up, what it is, what it means. And I formed my own opinion about it. That's not to me, giving me, if I, if this board prepares this document and it's what we wanted to say, that's our opinion. We hand it to the planner and he goes through with it. And he said, people, you know, blackout, 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 you know, everything's redacted because we can't have it. We might say, this is a good document. Yes, you go this way, we send it forward, we know we're on good solid ground. It's not that he's gonna take our work away from us, but he's going to help us.
Again, it's a cost benefit to the town.
It is.
That's what you have to look at.
But do we pay Southern Maine?
Oh, yeah.
They're on our budget. How much should we pay them in?
They double, they didn't double, I do, but they 15%.
But then we, well, the developers, when we send the projects up to review.
Well, I meant to be a member, yes.
Exactly. You have the membership.
Was it?
But that's, it's in the thousands.
It's in the thousand, thousand.
But usually that's...
One job.
Yeah.
About the same difference.
But they do a lot of other things for the town. We were talking about buying in, studies.
Stuff like that.
There's a lot they'll do.
Yeah, but they're working on a document, you said, you're paying an hourly rate.
Right.
Right, I mean, it isn't, it isn't free.
No, it's not free.
I mean, if it's something for us, we're paying them by the hour. If it's something for a contractor, then we take it like it's another thing.
The contractor pays.
The contractor pays.
But it's good money either way.
Right, yes, it is. It is.
And I think this other option is a lot bigger benefit to the town to act and get some of this done.
Well, a lot of this goes back to last year when we were talking to one finance in the Southman that we needed another person to do inspections. And 20, 25 hours wasn't going to do it. The state requires 13 areas of certification with 12 credit hours per year. So, and there's a lot of learning curves and the worst thing you could have is somebody that isn't knowledgeable and experienced and not a competent person out there doing it. So this, we looked at as this will relieve us from needing that extra person, although we're talking about additional workload too as well, by taking some of the planning review off of us and just shipping it out to them. And then at that point, we can build the contractor for it. The contractor's gonna pay for it.
And then that would make it cost effective.
That would make it cost effective to us.
There's a cost benefit.
There's a cost benefit. Yeah, so originally, we talked to the planner at 120 an hour.
Yep, 120 an hour.
And the assistant was 85.
Eighty-five.
So at that point, we stopped talking to the planner, instead of talking to the assistant.
Yeah, we talked to her.
But, I mean, is that, many wives and not fools?
She is, her main town is Lisbon right now. And it was similar to a retainage. This would be for 2021. How many hours a week do you want them? And you just keep giving them stuff and, you know, I think Lisbon was five hours a week. They were picking away at ordinances and things like that.
Picking away at the comp plans, things like that. And the other thing is that sometime you all of a sudden say, well, what you gave me was three hours this week, so don't worry about, you know, next week down the road when you're giving me eight hours. Because it all balances out. And you know, it just seemed a pretty good...
Outdoing the goal, yeah.
Yeah. And she was, just because she was, he's the founding partner in this, in the company. And he's the prime, the community planner. He's worked in Wyndham. He did the, sorry, glasses. He did, he's done, in fact, he did the downtown plan for North Wyndham. He's been everywhere. I mean, Wells forever, I think he did a lot in Wells.
He did some down.
He did some in Wells. He, where was the big subdivision?
Wyndham.
Wyndham was a big subdivision he did. He spent some things in Gloucester. And she's not a sludge either. She's not a sludge either. I mean, you know, you're not getting the, these were in Kittery.
Yeah, they were just going down to Kittery and we, they stopped to talk to us.
Yeah. And they were doing land use and development code remodification. You know, the code people we saw were all doing that, redoing the codes, taking everything. Basically, put them in a mix, mixture, and then taking them out and putting them in a cohesive white book for everything. So that was pretty, pretty good, but I think we can have them come to a workshop.
You got nothing to lose.
That's how I look at it.
You got nothing to lose.
Nothing to lose.
No.
So we had them come to a workshop.
And next one, Steve, want to see if he's available?
Yeah. Sure. Ask them about Wednesday. No, 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 I think next one's still would be better.
Yeah.
Because usually about 3 o'clock, there's nothing else going on.
We're all trying to find a place to hide.
Everybody's just trash.
It keeps very quiet, very dark.
Exactly.
Let me see, the eighth?
Well, and I don't know about the Wednesday after that because I don't know who's playing yet. Anybody know? It depends on who's playing.
We're meeting on the second, aren't we?
We are meeting on the second.
I don't know that I might know who yet.
I think the eighth's a good idea.
Give them a little bit of time and then if he can't make it, we'll try to readjust some time.
Yeah. But I would love to have you around for this. Y'all.
I can't on a Wednesday.
We'll come to your office.
Yeah, well, give us an hour.
It's a little chaotic.
Could you give us an hour?
We'll face that. We'll get the live version going.
Okay, everybody get the WhatsApp app. And we can do that. But so...
So what are you tempted by looking at that, Dave?
That's what I put it in as, yeah, the workshop on the eighth. We can ask them right off the bat, short-term rentals, what do you think? They say stay the hell out of it. Ignore it as long as you can.
This is true. What do you think about solar funds?
He's getting that dog, right? Somebody is.
Yeah.
I've got a meet with them Friday, I think.
Really? Tomorrow?
And that's 20 acres of solar land, 4.5 megawatts.
But megawatts, that's a lot of...
That's a lot of megas.
Yeah.
Maybe I'll see if they'll throw some in on this roof.
No, please, no, please.
No.
This is not strong enough.
This one...
Have you checked the choice? It's an eight short, take the leg.
I'm not saying nothing about this extra.
I mean, really?
I don't do much.
Nobody's arguing with you, Dennis.
No.
Dennis knows too much.
The insurance company came down to the school at one point and said, you're gonna get somebody committed to fix this. And...
We checked the UZ and all that and we're going.
So an operator managed to fix the support system for the pitch group.
Should I make a motion to the chair?
I was gonna say, oh, sorry. No, we're just, are we all, of those of us who can make it, are we fine for the...
Are you the new guy?
Are you here on the eighth yet?
I hope so. Probably scheduled it.
I know, Kenzie's not gonna be here.
You don't mean lying back on the eighth?
Okay. Jim, does that work for you?
It sure does.
Okay, I know it doesn't. We gotta do something like that sometimes.
Who gave the post? Did she trust us? I mean, it's no different than sending it to Southern Maine and Joe doesn't get it and the new guy, Steve's there, let it go.
Right, right. All right, that works. So is there any other business anyone would like to bring forward?
Two.
Yes.
I'll shut everything down.
One is, I, and I don't know if we need to vote to do this or how this works. We need to change the definition of, in our ordinance on the forestry thing.
On the agriculture?
The definition, and that other stuff, we need to pass that forward to the select.
You're on that? She's on that.
Okay.
Next.
And the next thing is, is I would like to take at some point in the near future, take that noise ordinance policy, or whatever you wanna call it, out of us only ordinance.
Good neighbor and neighbor.
Good neighbor, they know. But I would like to make sure we take that down this year because we are going to, we got a lot of things coming up.
We got a lot of things coming up, but that would be...
We need to address that.
You got some waving you wanna do when you can't wave if it's...
No, you know, it just needs to be out of there. It shouldn't have been here.
No, it should. There should be something in the land use chart that says, go to the site plan review regs and that site plan, conditional use and...
I mean, however you wanna do it, Ken, is fine with me, but I think we need to get it out of there and we need to get it addressed this year.
For forestry?
Yeah, but I mean, the strikeouts and all of that, do you want something like this tangible so you can look at it?
Yeah, definitely.
No, he was talking about good neighbor.
Both.
Forestry's done, you just voted on it.
No, 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 no.
No.
Oh, the other one, yes, I got that here.
I do.
Oh, boy, sorry.
I do.
And that, that one's the same thing that you did with this.
Yeah.
Exactly.
The other, the other one, no, is I don't know how you deal with that.
They will have to show this.
That's why I want to run it by the planner.
Okay.
As a, we've got a little bit of money. I've got a thousand in there for outside agencies. And I'm sure I could divert some training or something like that. I'd spend on that as well too, but...
There might be something in the workman's comp line.
They're about just like...
No, they said they got a reimbursement check on workman's comp for the municipal employees, you know, which includes you guys. So half the people work at that, so maybe you could have half of it saved. Just a thought.
No. All the other stuff goes.
Other than that, that's all I have.
I have one question.
All right.
I have a question. So right now, I think we have somebody before this last word to be considered on the board. Is it still procedure that we recommend someone?
At the worst, we are not gonna talk about that at this time. I've been to our town administrator and I brought a copy of our bylaws. And I said that, you know, they were accepted by the, gave copies to each member.
Yeah.
It was land use board, of course, and I was told, well, it didn't matter because I didn't vote on them. And so I asked, who was, you know, who had thrown their names in a hat? I was told that that the selectmen had not been given permission to tell me. And I said, but that, so that's all I know at this point.
So our bylaws weren't like officially adopted by the select?
Well, I would have thought when they...
They would have to abide by them anyways. There are bylaws, there are guidelines that they would follow.
They are, except when you go to this lovely book, it comes from the state, I believe, or the town.
We have to follow our bylaws.
And we have to follow them. And when you go to this manual...
That's the law.
It says, yes.
But it doesn't matter if we follow them or the select or doesn't follow them?
Well, this says, this is what we should do. And it states case law and everything, but...
But what is, what is it state? You're saying it's cases, but you're not saying what it states.
No, we have to have bylaws.
Doesn't have to follow.
And we have to follow them. So I would just, and I know we should never assume, but if we have to follow and we have to, our bylaws have to go before the board, which they did. And our old bylaws were actually signed by people who are no longer...
Did the selected, you presented them initial of the bylaws?
They didn't do anything.
They didn't do anything.
They said, thank you.
Yeah.
So did they actually go?
Do we find the table where we presented it?
No, I, no. No, I, no, right now, that's what I say, I'm gonna stop it right here. I did not take the time two weeks ago to go looking back for a tape or anything. Um, it was remembered that they were presented and I was told, but they didn't vote on it, so it doesn't matter. Now, if I present my bylaws and I am told, thank you very much, and they were accepted physically.
They were accepted.
As far as I was concerned, they were accepted and I thought, uh, we did the right thing. Evidently, I was incorrect in my assumption.
Can we ask for a ruling from MMA for that?
It depends how far we wanna take it right now, and we can ask MMA about it. Don't forget, planning board is not an elected board.
Right.
It is an appointed board.
Last night at the selectmen's meeting, you all got on, people watching on, um, they voted the table, the appointment's till January eighth, so it'll be another three weeks.
I heard that it was delayed.
It should be another three weeks.
They wanted to also meet with me to go over some of that stuff and I couldn't meet with them for a couple of weeks, so that could have been one of the reasons he was pushed back so far.
Well, I might have said, could the third selectman wasn't there? I don't know.
I, well, they, they-
The fourth selectman?
What I will say is this, I said, could I go to the executive session? No, I, I could not. And I, I did ask if they would let Ken represent us since he's director of planning. And would you mind if it was Ken? And I said, no, Ken would be fairly, it would be fair in representing us. I would have no problems with that at all.
We'll see what happens.
And we will see what happens. You know, it's, um, we need, we have Jim, thank you very much. We need a member on the board. I, I think we need to be a full complement so we can do our jobs properly and, uh, stay inside of our bylaws, which is what we are going to go by. And, um, you know, you pick your sites. And I just want to come by the mid-January, we should be a full complement and we'll go on. And we'll take it from there. So add that.
Do you know, do you know if there's a one half in the ring?
Yes.
Yes, we do know that, there are two.
And it is just a permanent position until June, it's only six months, so.
Yes, but that was the thing with me, that I kinda said, this isn't an issue again, it's an alternate for the next six months.
Because that position is up for reappointment?
All of us are up for reappointment in June, every one of us. That was, that, well, now I think everybody, did you check? And my, Dennis might be the only one.
I could be running this whole show on myself, you know, what do you think of that one?
We gotta do something.
Get this up real quick.
We gotta do something real, real quick about that.
We're all gonna be in trouble.
But anyway, uh, okay, third time I've said it and I'm not against it, but I would like to end the discussion about this.
Question to the chairman.
Thank you.
Back to you.
All in favor?
I'm gonna take the paper?
Thank you. Yeah, who doesn't need you?